Good evening, everyone. Sorry for the delay in the start time. I had some technical difficulties. This meeting of the Essex County Board of County Commissioners is hereby called to order. Due to the COVID-19 outbreak and to be in compliance with the Governor's executive order, this meeting is being conducted remotely. The public is able to view this meeting via live stream on Facebook and YouTube. A link for the live stream is posted on the Commissioner's website. To all participating in this meeting, please be mindful to put your microphones on mute until speaking. Additionally, please identify yourself by putting your name on the record each time before you speak. Madam Clerk, please call the roll.
Commissioner Cooper? Absent Commissioner Gill?
Here.
Commissioner Graham? Absent Commissioner Johnson? Commissioner Johnson?
Present.
Commissioner Luciano?
Here.
Commissioner Mercado?
Here.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Here.
Commissioner Sebel?
Here.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Here.
We omit the salute to the flag since we are conducting this meeting remotely. However, let us pause for a moment of silence for the 2,722 family members and those who lost their lives here in Essex County. But let's have a special moment of silence for all those lost in Florida in the building collapse and those who are still missing. Thank you. I have before me certification from the clerk that this meeting is in compliance with the Open Public Meetings Act. Madam Clerk, are there any transcripts to be approved?
Yes, Mr. President, there are two. Conference Board Meeting, April 21st, 2021, and May 12th, 2021.
Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebel and a second from Commissioner Vice President Pamares to approve the transcripts. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper? Absent Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham? Absent Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Madam Clerk, are there any topics of discussion?
Mr. President, there are none.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to the public comment session. Today's meeting is a combined conference board meeting, and we will vote on every item on the agenda. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had the opportunity to submit questions and comments for consideration and can also call in. At this portion of the meeting, the clerk will have additional instructions for our calls. Madam Clerk?
Constituents were given the opportunity to call in or send emails for public comment prior to the meeting. If you're calling in, you will be acknowledged to speak in the order that your call was received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. We have two public comments, three public comments today, and one is on the public hearing for Green Acres. So those public comments will be reserved for when we do the public hearing regarding the Green Acres ordinance resolution. So at this time, our public information officer will announce the callers so they can state their comment or question and be reminded you have three minutes to speak.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. I'm sorry. Thank you, Madam Clerk. Chala Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We do have a caller waiting to speak. The caller's name is Whitney Strube. Mr. Strube, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Sure. Hello, Whitney Strube here from Newark, and I'm calling about Agenda Item Number 39, which is the contract award to Keith Comissary Network. I was really disappointed to see this, given that two years ago, you may recall, a group of us called it your attention to the fact that Keith Comissary had been implicated in a bribery scandal in the state of Mississippi, where it was part of a cohort that bribed public officials for contracts. As we also called your attention to at that time, Black Lives Matter in Missouri had marched against Keith Comissary. One woman was quoted at that time in 2015 as saying, this is a verbatim quote, that they have been profiting from the incarcerated people and their families. And when we called this to your attention in 2019, you did briefly remove it from the agenda, but then later put it back on and basically pleaded lack of options. So you've got two years since then to find other bidders, bidders who are not, you know, implicated in bribery scandals, you know, maybe even who aren't racist predatory vulture firms that prey on incarcerated people for profit. It doesn't look like you've done that. So I do want to protest the renewal of the contract with Keith and call for you to reject it and demand something better, because this is absolutely the least one could hope for in Essex County. It's pretty shameful to see that you're continuing to contract with a firm like this. And I think that speaks to the larger question of passivity around the jail and around the ICE detainees that we're seeing right now as ICE is transferring people in significant numbers. This is something that none of us wanted and that we think could be prevented. Activists are protesting outside of Cory Booker's office this week, demanding that he do more to intervene. This isn't Donald Trump's ICE, Joe Biden's ICE. That's the Democrats, that's you, that's Booker, that's Menendez, and we need more outspoken opposition to these transfers. We need you to escalate your own opposition, partly committing more money to pay bonds to get people out of ICE detention from the tens of millions of dollars you've taken from ICE, and partly to be making public demands of Booker, Menendez, and Joe Biden that they do more. You know, we could stop this, and I'm not seeing it from you. You know, maybe there's backstage discussions, I don't know, I'm not privy to that, and so the last thing I would do is just ask for the record a written response. You know, what are you doing to prevent these transfers? Because I can tell you that what we, the activists and abolitionists, are doing is working with people inside and their families. We're making demands of Booker and Menendez. So where are you on this and what are you doing to stop these transfers that could be avoided? Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Malumba. Mr. President, there are no emails that we receive or written correspondence for a public comment at this point, at this time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk, and thank you, Mr. Strube. And as is our practice, we will get back to you in writing. Thank you so much. Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions for introduction and first reading? You're muted.
Mr. President, we have none.
Do we have any ordinances or resolutions for listing purposes only?
Mr. President, we have none.
Madam Clerk, do we have any ordinances or resolutions on second reading and public hearing tonight?
Mr. President, yes, we do, and that is, we have the multi-part grant application. However, the public hearing cannot be held until 6:00 PM. When we get close to 6:00 PM, I will bring it to your attention, and then we can hear this ordinance at that time.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. We will come back to that. All right, so let's move on to Resolutions 1 through 7, which are budget insertions, and please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Good evening, Mr. President and members of the board. We have seven budget insertions for this evening. The first being items from the Department of Transportation for emergency repairs to three bridges, the Bridge Street, Clay Street, and Jackson Street Bridges. The second is a community, Clean Communities Grant for the Department of Public Works, $72,937.96. Third, from the Transportation Planning Authority, in the amount of $304,316. Number four, from again, North Jersey Planning Authority, Sub Regional Planning, Sub Regional Transportation Planning Program, $132,966. Item five is additional monies for law enforcement, public safety, for COVID care, education, stabilization for our Division of Youth Services, an amount of $25,000. Item six is the New Jersey Transit for the Shared Ride Program for our Division of Senior Services, an amount of $60,000. And finally, in the amount of $450,000, we have a vaccination supplemental grant funding from the Department of, for the Department of Health and Rehabilitation Rehabilitation Rehabilitation. Those are the seven budget assertions, Mr. President.
Thank you, Mr. Jackson. Mr. Polavecchio?
Mr. President, I don't have any questions, as Mr. Jackson said. These are insertion of items, insertions of item revenue from various sources, mostly from state agencies.
Thank you. Mr. McInerney?
Yes, the only question I have is with Resolution Number 1, for the $2 million, is that in addition to the normal annual grant we get from the Department of Labor? I'm sorry, the Department of Transportation?
Through you, Mr. President, yes, it is.
So this was a separate application, and additional money is coming to us from the state?
That is correct.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments about these budget insertions? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Mercado and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take Resolutions 1 through 7 as a one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebel?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham? Absent Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper? Absent Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions 8 through 17, which are from the Office of the County Administrator with Risk Management. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management, will handle these items.
Good evening, Commissioner President, fellow commissioners, Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management from the County of Essex. We're going to begin with a letter of recommendation. The county administrator through the Office of Purchasing advertised via competitive contract for voluntary individual short-term disability brokerage services via a set-aside program, which was originally put out and advertised on May 11th of this year. Two qualified brokers responded prior to the June 2nd, 2021 date. Those two were Health Benefit Advisor and Risk Strategy, Risk Strategy Solutions. A committee with representation from the Department of Risk Management, County Administration, and the Office of Small Business Development and Affirmative Action reviewed the proposal. The following scores were generated. Health Benefit Advisors with an average score of 84.6, and Risk Strategy Solutions with an average score of 43.6. As such, we recommend that this contract be awarded to Health Benefit Advisors. Mr. Anton Campbell from Health Benefit Advisors is on the line if anybody would like his input.
Sure, since we have him, let's have him identify himself and tell us a little bit about what he and his company is going to do.
Sure. Mr. Campbell?
Hi there. Good evening, Mr. President and County Commission members. My name again is Anton Campbell. I represent Health Benefit Advisors. What we do is we provide a individual short-term disability plan that will enable the county employees access to benefits to aid them whenever they're placed out of work due to an unforeseen injury or sickness. And within our services, what we do is we assist them with processing their claim, we answer questions, and we, whenever possible, we try to reduce the amount of administrative work from the administration onto ourselves. Try to make it as easy as possible for everyone involved, while at the same time providing a top-notch service to all plan members. If you have any questions, we are always available to answer anything. We are always hands-on, we're boots on the ground, we work directly with everyone involved, administration, as well as the employees directly.
Thank you, Mr. Campbell. Mr. Polavecchio, any questions?
Thank you.
Yes, yes, thank you, Mr. President. To the administration, this is a three-year agreement, I see. Are there option years for an extension built into this, or is it just three years?
Yeah, I believe there are two one-year opt-ins built in.
Thank you.
Through you, Mr. President. As a reminder to the speakers, would they please identify their name and their association every, each and every time they speak?
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. McInerney?
Yes, so this is a voluntary disability program, correct?
This is Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management. Yes, it is.
So county employees can opt this additional coverage or not?
Tim Walker, again, the answer is yes.
Okay, so we're not really, we're not, what's, what? What are the fees involved in this? I mean, where is the compensation for this? Does it comes out of the employee when they makes premium payment? Is there?
This is Anton Campbell. Yes, the premium payments would be through a payroll deduction. It's solely paid by the employees.
So this is just granting, this just really grants the organization the opportunity to do business with county employees, effectively. Much like the 401K plans that we have for county employees. I don't care.
That's correct.
Okay, all right, so this, if a county employee doesn't have this disability program, what other options does he have under any disabilities? Is there an overall county disability, or we go to the state on that? Do they go to the state? What are the disability options an employee has?
We have other, we have other disability plans that employees can take advantage of. The difference, I think the salient difference here is that this provides for portability, meaning that if an employee should leave the county, this program can go along with it. Our other programs don't provide that portability, and that's one of the reasons why we wanted to introduce that option for employees. It's one of the things that they've asked for for quite some time about having to be able to take it with them should they decide to go, you know, someplace else.
But does the county, does the county have a disability policy? Somebody gets injured on the job, or, or, no? So there is no, other than work-related, there's workers' compensation?
Other than voluntary, that's correct.
Right.
This is Tim Walker, again, Director of Risk Management. Any work-related injury would be covered under work as well.
Right, that's, that's what I was saying. No, this was introduced a while back, a number of years ago. And for some reason, I thought at the time, I remember the conversation with Ralph Chiello, somebody came in to sell the disability policies, but I, there was, I didn't understand, well, I didn't understand at the time that there wasn't disability from, from the county unless it was job-related. So, and I understand that, that makes sense. If they want disability that's not job-related, they have to pay for it.
So I'm about to go on with the field, I got a second or two, what's up?
So, is that Mr. Ortiz? You are not muted, sir. Please mute your devices.
No problem, I'll take care of it. Exactly.
Al, we're going to put you on last for that.
All right, I don't have any, so these rates, everybody gets an opportunity to review the rates, to review the policy and make a decision on their own, correct?
That is correct.
All right, thank you.
Commissioner Johnson, is your hand up? Oh, okay. All right. Let's move on to the next, this is number nine.
Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management. We're going to go nine through 17. This is all the county's insurance renewal. These are all our policies that we have renewed, and we will go line by line. For number nine, this is the renewal of the county's excess public officials employment practices and employed lawyer liability insurance policy. This policy was part of a set-aside program, is being brokered by the Massey Agency, an MBE firm. They were able to renew our policy this year with the incumbent carrier, Chubb Insurance Company, which came in at an increase of $4,885. Represents a 4.1% increase. Total premium for the year is $126,265. We recommend proceeding with the purchase of that policy. Any questions on that policy?
No.
Okay, moving to number 10. We're seeking authorization for the renewal of the county's privacy liability policy. This is also a policy was part of the set-aside program. Massey and MBE brokerage firm is our broker on this one. They were able to successfully renew our policy, again, with the incumbent carrier, Chubb Insurance Company, total premium of $63,487. That represents a $31,712 increase, a little over 100%. In their defense, the cyber liability market is a, is a very tough market right now, as you've seen in news accounts. There have been numerous ransomware attacks throughout the country, throughout the globe. That has made it a very hard market, and thus the reason for the increase in premiums. Are there any questions on that policy?
Please continue.
Continuing to the next policy, again, being brokered by an MBE firm, Massey Agency. This is the county's renewal of the SSEC, of the pollution liability insurance coverage. This is a policy that was successfully renewed, again, with the incumbent carrier, Chubb Insurance Company. The premium for this year was $27,699, represented an increase of a little over $2,300 or 8% of the premium. We recommend that renewal. If there are no questions, moving to the next policy, it would be the renewal of the excess workers' compensation insurance for the county. This is being brokered by Connor Strong and Buckaloo. The previous policy, we came in with a renewal this year with a slight increase. The increase totaled $18,532. The total amount of the premium is $386,549. It represented a 2% increase in premium.
Mr. President, could I ask a quick question on that?
Absolutely, Mr. Polavecchio.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, can you just explain what excess workers' comp insurance means in this context?
Absolutely. Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management, speaking. The county has a workers' comp program, which covers county employees who are injured during the course and scope of their employment. The county has chosen to retain the first million dollars of every claim, and beyond that, we purchased an excess insurance policy that covers any payment for either lost wages, medical bills, permanency awards. That would then get covered by this policy.
And when you say retain, Mr. Walker, when you say retain the first million, that's per year of expenses of workers' compensation throughout the entire place, all the employees, right?
That's actually per claim, so the first, yeah, the first million dollars of every worker's comp claim, the county is responsible for the payments.
Self-insured, right.
And this policy sits excess of that, and this year, we had a case that went above that million dollars.
And that's when this policy will be called on?
Will, definitely, exactly.
Thank you. Thanks for that explanation.
No problem. Any other questions on that policy? If not, we will move to seeking authorization for the renewal of the county's excess liability, excess auto liability, and excess law enforcement liability policy or program. This is also being brokered by Connor Strong and Buckaloo. We had a situation here where our previous policy had a, a policy limit of $7 million per claim, $14 million for any one incident. At renewal, we weren't able to duplicate those limits, so we had to So we had to buy one policy with the incumbent carrier for five million per claim, ten million aggregate, and then buy an excess policy on top of that to bring us up to the previous seven million, fourteen million that we had currently. Uh, as a result, the increased premium uh brought the total premium to one million two hundred ninety-nine dollars. Eight hundred and eighty-one dollars represented an increase of thirty-five percent or three hundred thirty-four thousand three hundred eighty-one dollars. Uh, this was the, was easily the best deal we were able to get from the market. As such, we recommend renewing with these two cases. Uh, if there are no questions on, uh, go ahead.
No, go ahead, continue.
Okay, if there are no questions, the next one, number fourteen. We seek authorization to renew the county's professional liability policy for Essex County Hospital Center. That is our medical malpractice policy. Um, this is also being brokered by Connor Strong and Buckaloo. Uh, we seek to renew with the incumbent carrier. Uh, in this case, the carrier is QBE Specialty Insurance. We have a total premium of, hold on, I just wanna make sure I get the right number, of two hundred thirty-six thousand dollars. Actually, the carrier for that is Ironshore, pardon me. Um, that represents an increase of seventy-one thousand dollars over the previous year and a forty-three percent rate increase. Uh, a lot of that was driven obviously by the COVID pandemic and the number of claims that the medical malpractice market faced as a result of that. If there are no questions with that one, uh, we'll jump to number fifteen. Seeking authorization for the renewal of the county's commercial property insurance policy. Uh, with this one, the county uh is also being represented by Connor Strong and Buckaloo is our broker. Uh, we actually are seeking to change our carrier in this one because we were getting a, a better deal with better rates and better coverage limit. Uh, we are changing that to Travelers Insurance Company. Uh, and we are saving by doing that seventy thousand four hundred and two dollars, which represents uh a five percent reduction.
Nice.
And moving forward, number sixteen, we seek authorization to renew the county's government crime policy with AIG Insurance Company. Uh, that is a policy being brokered by an MBE, uh, the Massey Agency. Uh, we seek to renew uh for a premium of nine thousand six hundred seventy-one dollars in premium plus a twenty-nine dollar surcharge uh that represents a six dollar increase from the previous year. Uh, if there are no questions on that, we will jump to number sixteen where we are seeking authorization for the renewal, or I'm sorry, number seventeen, where we are seeking authorization to purchase a new policy that the county has not had to date. It is through AXA Excel Insurance Company. The name of the policy is an active assailant insurance policy. Um, it would act as a coverage that would assist the county in the event of an active uh shooting situation. It would provide us crisis management, psychological counseling, public relations, new employee recruiting and the like. Um, the terms of the policy is a fifteen thousand dollar premium. We would recommend the purchase of that policy.
Mr. President, can I ask one on that, uh, number seventeen? Ask one question.
Please do. Mr. Polavecchio.
Thank you. Mr. Walker, on the, the active assailant insurance policy, which is a new purchase, um unfortunately, I think I understand what it's for, but how did that, uh, the purchase of that new policy get out? How was that represented?
Uh, how was that, what, sir?
How, how did that come to, what made us go out and seek that new policy, one that we haven't had before?
Uh, Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management. Um, just looking at the number of very large cases that have hit the country in the past couple of years. I'm giving you an example, um, the Las Vegas Route ninety-one harvest festival shooting. Uh, the total amount of claims in that matter to date is eight hundred million dollars. Um, similarly, the Fed executing that occurred out in Indianapolis. They are uh beginning to put that case together. They feel that'll be in the fifteen to twenty million dollar range. These type of risks, we felt we needed additional coverage to protect the county for.
Okay. Mr. McInerney.
So if, if there's a similar type of occurrence that you just, like the examples you just provided us with, this, what does this fifteen thousand buy us in terms of, in terms of coverage?
Uh, Tim Walker, Director of Risk Management. Uh, it buys us a million dollar policy. Uh, so it would give us coverage up to a million dollars uh for all the various things that we talked about earlier.
Okay, so it's, all right, so it's up to a million, it's up to a million dollars.
Yeah, for fifteen thousand, I thought it would, it would be a wise investment for the county.
Yeah, it, it doesn't seem, with all these occurrences happening around the country, it doesn't seem like a very, yeah, the risk would seem higher than fifteen thousand for a million dollars. That's, so I'm not, I'm not debating the premium, just saying it's a little difficult to reconcile, you know? But okay, thank you very much.
No problem.
Thank you, Mr. McInerney. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing none. I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take Resolutions eight through seventeen. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham absent, Commissioner Johnson.
You're muted, sir.
Okay. I'll, I'll come back to Commissioner Johnson.
He is.
Commissioner Johnson.
He's muted again.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yeah.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
I got you, Mr. Commissioner Johnson. Uh, Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
President not voting on number eight and yes for nine through seventeen.
Okay, so moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions eighteen, nineteen and thirty-nine, which are from the Department of Corrections. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, sir. Uh, Director Ortiz will handle these items.
Good afternoon. Alfaro Ortiz, Director Essex County Correctional Facility, number eighteen, is a shared services agreement between the County of Gloucester and the County of Essex for the housing of adult inmates in the Essex County Correctional Facility. Um, as you are maybe aware, the Essex County, the um Gloucester County Jail shut down some years ago and uh we don't have anybody currently from Gloucester, but we do get one every so often. So we want to keep this contract in force so that we have the ability to do so when they do have an inmate that fits a criteria that we can house. Um, I'll answer any questions once I'm done with the rest of it, that's okay, Mr. President. I'll go to nineteen. Department of Corrections, authorization for the county ventures to apply for a local efficiency achievement program, LEAP implementation grant. This is a grant specifically be, between the merger of Union County Jail and the Essex County Jail to purchase and improve uh equipment and anything that may need to. In this particular case, we're looking uh to purchase two vans and improve our intake area where the uh chart people handle the incomings of the Union County prisoners. Um, and item thirty-nine is Department of Corrections contract award, Chief Commissary Network LLC for the operation of the Essex County Commissary at the correctional facility exercising a two-year contract extension option. It's revenue to the county. I'll be happy to answer whatever question the um commissioners may have.
Mr. Polavecchio.
Yes, um, just a comment, that's number thirty-nine. That was a bid that was awarded back in twenty nineteen with a uh two-year contract option. So uh this would be the final contract option on this particular contract for number thirty-nine. Thank you, Mr. Polavecchio.
Mr. McInerney.
I don't have any comments or questions.
Permission to Sebo.
I have a question on number nineteen. You indicated that you're going to purchase two vans from Union County. What is the purpose of these vans? Will they, uh, what use will they be? Because I understand, I understand we're going to provide transportation for family members and visitors to, to come to the Essex County Jail. Would these vans be used for that purpose?
Uh, Alfaro Ortiz, Director Essex County Correction Facility. We at Essex do not provide that transportation. That'll be done by the Union County officials. These transportation vans are purchased for the occasional uh transport of individuals to a court situation that they usually handle, but we obviously need these two vans so we can accommodate that should the need arise. This is strictly for inmate transportation to hospitals and whatever have you. We just need to um supplement our vehicle fleet.
I think I understand. So if they need to go to court in Union County, these vans will provide the transportation.
Correct, Alfaro Ortiz, yes, when the, the need arises.
Okay, but these vans are not for visitors. Union County provides.
No, that's not our, that is a Union County responsibility.
All right, thank you very much.
Commissioners.
Thank you, Mr. President.
You're welcome. Any other questions or comments regarding eighteen, nineteen and thirty-nine? I, I have one, Mr. Ortiz. This Keith, wasn't this O'Keefe? Is this, this is the same, I, I can vaguely remember that it was O'Keefe or something. Did they change their name?
Uh, Alfaro Ortiz, Director. I've been dealing with this company for years now and it's always been Keith Commissary.
Okay. All right, and to be clear, this is a contract extension option, not a new bid, correct?
Alfaro Ortiz, correct. It's an option.
Thank you very much. There are no more questions. I have a motion from VP Palmares and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take eighteen, nineteen and thirty-nine as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmares.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham absent, Commissioner Gill.
Uh, ye- yes on number, yes on number eighteen, yes on number nineteen, um, and no on number thirty-nine.
Okay, um, Commissioner Cooper absent, Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions twenty through twenty-two, which are from the Department of Health and Rehabilitation, Division of the Hospital Center. Please read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Thank you, uh, Mr. President. Frank, Director DelGaudio will address these items.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. Uh, Frank DelGaudio, Director of Health and Rehabilitation for the County of Essex. Uh, Resolution number twenty is a intergovernmental transfer agreement with the State of New Jersey. This is for, um, if you remember, the uh, the ordinance we did for the hospital pilot fee program. This program is gaining momentum and we're, we're close to uh actually sending out the invoices in, in support of the ordinance. And the State of New Jersey drafted language that we worked on for several months um on how we're gonna transfer the money from the hospitals that is collected to the State of New Jersey. Okay, uh, Resolution number twenty-one is a consulting services for the hospital fee pilot program. This is with the same firm that started on this program with us, uh, Myers and Stauffer. It's a uh one-year, twelve-month contract, not to exceed ninety-two thousand seven hundred dollars. This is to do all of the accounting and bookkeeping and invoicing and um tracking of all of the hospital payments to the county. An RFP was issued and Myers and Stauffer were, was the only respondent uh to this RFP. Resolution number twenty-two is a um competitive contract to Pharma Care or recommending Pharma Care, who is the hospital's current pharmacy consultant. And they were the sole um bidder on this uh competitive contract.
Thank you. Mr. Polavecchio.
I don't have any questions on these, thank you.
Mr. McInerney.
I, uh, yes, this, this has been uh in the works for quite some time. Uh, there were with the consultants, uh, phone calls, uh, just about every Monday. A lot of them, which I also participated with. Uh, this piece, this is just a piece of the overall pilot program. This uh resolution just deals with the transfer of funds from this program, from the county to the state and the ability of the county to take their nine percent fee from those, from those funds. Hospitals will pay over money and uh the county remits that to the state based on disagreement. And um one of the concerns, uh, not to get into a lot of the weeds, but I, I do want to give Frank and, and the people involved in this a lot of credit because there was a lot of time put into this and a lot of detail in this agreement, especially relevant to uh the timing of these uh payments. Frank, if I could ask you, just for the board's edification, just to let them know just what was involved with that?
Uh, yeah, through you, Mr. President, Frank DelGaudio, Director of Health and Rehab. Um, uh, originally, what happened was the state put out a draft um intergovernmental transfer agreement, which we had some concerns about. Because what happens in this, in this pilot program, the, the hospitals are laying out millions of dollars um anticipating, you know, a twofold return on what they're putting out to um, to increase their payments they, they received on their Medicaid um clients. So the original language was somewhere thirty to forty-five days and we didn't see that as being acceptable because as we know, everything gets delayed. So by having the, the hospitals laying out that kind of money, I mean, we did fight, as Mr. McInerney indicated, for months to get that number in writing, um, put down to fourteen days. So all of these are electronic transfers, so we did not see the reason for that length of time to elapse before the hospital. see the reason for that length of time to elapse before the hospitals would see um the benefits of this program.
Mr. McInerney is having trouble with his uh computer. He did call me and just say he's he could hear and he's fine.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. DelGaudio. Commissioners, any questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Vice President Palmaris and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take Resolutions twenty through twenty-two as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaris.
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved. Uh Mr. President, it's now uh a little after six. Uh we can now uh move to the ordinance, republic hearing.
So let's do number twenty-three, but this by itself, and then we'll go to that.
Okay.
Uh this twenty-three, which is from the Department of Economic Development, Training, and Employment. Please read it into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson.
Uh thank you, Mr. President. Uh Mr. Bradley uh will address this item.
Uh good afternoon, Commissioners. Uh my name is Donald Bradley. Um IT Supervisor for the Departments of um Economic Development, Training, and Employment and Citizen Services. Um the item, Department of Economic Development, Training, and Employment, and Department of Citizen Services, Approval of Master Services Agreement with Freshworks, Inc., under Bergen County Cooperative Agreement, Contract Number CK zero-four, Subcontract Number nineteen-dash-thirty-four, thirty-six-month term, eight-hundred-thirty-seven-thirty-nine and thirty-seven cents. And basically, uh in a nutshell, what this involves is this is um will work in conjunction with our call center uh for the uh both departments, and it's basically a service request system that will um allow um our employees to track um all um uh inquiries, um complaints, and um requests for uh benefits. So um I can entertain any questions that you have uh at this time.
Mr. Polavecchio.
Uh yes, quick question. Is this uh is there a service provider, or is this a software system, or a combination of the two, or something completely different?
Uh it's a web-based software system um that will um also, which I didn't mention before, that also will allow us um, you know, in the midst of COVID, or if we get shut down, also will allow us to function uh if that should happen again, so.
All right, thank you.
You're welcome.
Commissioners. Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. McInerney. Misses, any que- questions or comments? Hearing now, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Johnson. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Palmaris.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's go back to the uh Resolution or Second Reading and Public Hearing.
Mr. President, would you like me to read the title of that resolution?
Yes, please.
Or- ordinance, okay? Public hearing for a grant application for Green Acres Multi-Park. Uh and this is a public hearing.
Okay, so let's open it up before I do declare the public hearing on this item open. Madam Clerk, do we have anyone who has written in, or anyone on the phone?
Mr. President, if I may, we actually, uh Mr. Zaitz has a presentation, short presentation to make to the board to read a statement about what what's planned. I would suggest reading that statement prior to entertaining comments.
Let's um bring him in.
Mr. Zaitz.
Uh good evening, President Richardson and the entire Essex County Board of County Commissioners. My name is Joshua Zaitz, and I am the Contract Administrator for the Essex County Department of Parks, Recreation, and Cultural Affairs. This public hearing is being conducted as part of a Green Acres application requirement. The County of Essex is completing a Green Acres application for improvements to both We Quake Park in Newark and the Turtleback Zoo in West Orange. The County of Essex is requesting a total of two-point-five million dollars in funding from the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protections twenty-twenty-one Green Acres Program for these two projects, whose combined estimated total is five-point-one million dollars. I am going to provide you with information on the We Quake Park improvements, and then our Turtleback Zoo Director, Jillian Fazio, will tell you about the Turtleback Zoo project. The We Quake Park Improvement Project will renovate the Dividend Hill Memorial Pavilion and adjacent pathway, and add lighting, fencing, and general landscape improvements to the area around the Dividend Hill. Uh Dividend Hill, also called Bound Hill, was the site of the Boundary Conference between the city founders of Elizabeth Town and Newark on May twentieth sixteen sixty-eight. Although the boundaries of Newark have changed considerably since then, the site is still a unique historical resource within the Essex County park system. The pavilion was constructed at the site in nineteen sixteen to commemorate Newark's two-hundred-fiftieth anniversary, and now, over a hundred years old, is in need of restoration work. Completing improvements to pathways, lighting, fencing, and landscaping will make the site a more accessible and enjoyable destination for park visitors. Enhancements will also be made to the park's entrance and picnic area. Finally, new signage, benches, and other park impertinences will be installed throughout the site. I'm now going to turn this portion of the public hearing over to our Zoo Director, Jillian. Thank you.
Thank you, Essex County Board of County Commissioners. This is Jillian Fazio, Director of Essex County Turtleback Zoo, and I'm going to tell you a bit about the Turtleback Zoo portion of the Essex County Green Acres Multi-Park application. It's the Amazing Asia Exhibit, um which exceeds standards set forth by the Association of Zoos and Aquariums. The animal habitats included adhere to all federal, state, and local laws. Uh this new Asia exhibit is currently replacing existing habitat within the zoo's footprint that was previously designated for red pandas, muntjac, and dwarf rock. The exhibit does not go outside of the boundaries of the zoo, and will highlight several of these vulnerable, endangered, and critically endangered Asian species in need of our conservation effort. Um the species included are the clouded leopard, red panda, hornbill, and Vietnamese turtle, for it. The new habitats will allow for both reproductive and geriatric management of all these species in order to help support species survival program efforts, and include viewing areas for our guests to learn and educate them um about the conservation of these animals. We also have a display area where we can um put potential neonates, as well as a training area for our guests to view the exemplary husbandry care that our animal staff provides daily to our animals. There is a climate-controlled indoor area, which will be approximately two-hundred-and-eighty square feet. This indoor space consists of three four-by-eight red panda dens, four eight-by-ten cloud leopard dens, and one five-by-ten, what we're calling transfer den, which has the flexibility to rotate all three species, the hornbill, cloud leopard, and red panda, through for daily husbandry, training, and management. Um the indoor neonatal area is seven-by-eight, and it is on view to guests. It will be available so when we have cubs um or any other neonates, they can be on display, and we can house them more appropriately if we need um any intervention care with incubators, or so they can learn how to climb and jump um when they're still little, which requires a lot of lower kind of smaller perched-out areas. The indoor exhibit space is twelve-by-twelve. It's viewable to guests, and we are going to rotate the hornbill and the red panda because they are um they require have different temperature requirements, so the panda can use the space in the summer when they need the air conditioning, and the hornbill can be outside and vice versa in the winter. This space um will also be providing the habitat for the critically endangered turtle. Uh the outdoor animal space is approximately eleven-hundred-and-seventy-nine square feet, and this includes separate areas for both the red panda, which is ten-by-twenty, and the clouded leopard, which is sixteen-by-twenty-nine um for visitor viewing. The cloud leopard area includes a three-sided um area with a roof, and we're putting heating element in that location to allow access for the animals twelve months of the year. Uh there's a roof over about fifty percent of the red panda outdoor habitat to provide necessary shade and protection from weather. We also are including a behind-the-scenes outdoor habitat for both the red panda, which is eight-by-sixteen, and the clouded leopard, which is eight-by-ten-by-eighteen, and that allows us um some flexibility in our husbandry and management to house offspring, breeding pairs, geriatric animals, or to hold animals to assist the species survival program for both the red panda and cloud leopard species. Uh there is some animal care team space, which includes a food prep area, which is eight-by-fifteen, some storage and hallways adjacent to the animal dens to in order for the um keepers to clean, train, and maintain the enclosures. Um Josh and I are happy to answer any additional questions that the Board of Commissioners or the public may have at this time. Thank you so much.
Mr. President, if you're ready, we uh we can take uh questions from the public.
Go ahead, Madam Clerk.
Uh Public Information Officer Officer Chalo Malumba, do we have any uh public or individuals on the line for public comment for this public hearing?
We do, Madam Clerk. Uh Chalo Malumba, Public Information Officer for the Essex County Board of Commissioners. We have multiple callers waiting to speak. I will put our first caller through. The first caller's name is Jerome Ebene. Sorry if I mispronounced your name. Uh please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Uh you may begin, and remember, this is about the Green Acres uh Multi-Park Ordinance. You may begin.
Commissioners, my name is Jerome Ebene, E-B-E-N. Uh I'm an interested party. I live in West Orange, and uh I'm concerned about the expansion, over-expansion of the Turtleback Zoo, and what that does to the community as a whole, in terms of traffic, in terms of uh of pollution, in terms of taking down hundreds of full-grown uh old forested trees. Most of the trees the in the in the Turtleback area are date from the Civil War. They're a hundred and fifty or more years old. Many of them are eighty to ninety feet tall, and uh we were promised by the county executive to have a master plan of the zoo that would would uh address all of the issues of traffic, of the environment, and the master plan was there was a preliminary master plan. I don't think it ever was approved, and it certainly never came before the adjacent planning boards of the communities that back into or front uh the Turtleback Zoo. That would be the communities of West Orange, Maplewood, Melbourne, South Orange. And uh in in addition, the people that wrote the master plan are from the firm that was hired was retained. They they they're from Philadelphia, Pennsylvania. Nothing against the firm, except they're not licensed planners in the state of New Jersey, and as such, going outside of the state, never mind going outside of the county, but going outside of the state of New Jersey to get professionals where there's ample proper professionals in Essex County that could have done a a jo- a a planning uh a planning document that would be better, and because they are locally local planning firms, that should have been the that should have been the goal of the county executive, keeping the tax money, hiring people from within the county to do the planning, and people who would know uh more about the local environment, local geography, uh trees, and so on. So I would hope that I don't think the plan was ever adopted. So you're just expanding the Turtleback Zoo without a master plan is like expanding any 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 community or any individual township without a master plan. And as you know, all of all of the cities, all of the townships within Essex County can must have a master plan. I'm just stressing that we have that master plan uh approved, and hopefully someone from a master a planning company from within best within Essex County, at the very least, the state of New Jersey should do that plan. Thank you.
Thank you. Uh our next caller is Virginia Falconer. Uh please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, can you hear me okay?
Yes, we can.
Okay, uh Virginia Falconer from Maplewood. Um so um I applaud your campaign to upgrade our urban parks like We Quake, um and likewise, the Turtleback Zoo and complex, I know, are very popular and really heavily visited. However, I continue to question the plan to keep pouring significant sums of money into the zoo and the complex. Um I'm glad to hear from the director. I I don't think we had firm information before that the new uh exhibit is within the New Asia exhibit is within the the quote existing footprint of the zoo. However, there is no firm boundary to the zoo. Uh boundary fencing continually creeps out into the uh joining South Mountain Reservation, destroying old growth forests. Um it's just an inexorable march of fencing out, trees dying, and then claiming of that land as part of the zoo. Um in the past, it has been difficult to get information on the zoo expansion and development plans, uh and I wonder where we the public can find information on the cost, the two-point-five million dollars that the county's going to spend on this. And I would urge you, um for, you know, many times I've come before you and urged you before, to commit to a firm border for the zoo, and as the previous caller said, a final version of the master plan, and to limit all work to within the footprint. Uh the zoo and the complex are certainly big enough, and they have enough resources devoted to them. The reservation is a really vital natural resource in our densely developed and populated urban county, and I hope the commissioners realize that. And I'd like you to please consider a more balanced approach to our recreation needs in Essex County. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Bill Barron. Uh please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. Mr. Barron, you may begin.
Hi, um my name is Bill Barron. I'm a resident of Montclair, and I'm the Chairperson of the Essex County Gateway Group for Sierra Club. Um as the two previous speakers have indicated, um the the fact that the new exhibit is going to be within the existing footprint of the zoo is uh very good news to hear, um as we oppose any expansion of the zoo beyond the current footprint. Uh but I do want to emphasize again, as the other speakers have said, that there's a major need for a master plan that the public has a chance to look at, both master plan for both the zoo and the uh park itself. And also, you know, the fact that this was brought up um without any prior notice, that there was no definition given to the public as to what this expansion would entail, uh you know, speaks to the need for a a more- you know, speaks to the need for a more robust, more transparent public outreach on the part of the zoo and the county and the commissioners. So, you know, I just want to, I'll, I'll be quick. Just want to say we support a master plan. We ask that you defer any action on this until a master plan is presented and reviewed and commented on by the public. Thank you.
Thank you. The next caller is Robert Raschkes. Mr. Raschkes, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Yes, Robert Raschkes, R.A.S.H.K.E.S., West Orange, New Jersey. I have read the public notice issued by Essex County on June 8th pursuant to tonight's public hearing regarding improvements to Weekwake Park in Newark and Turtle Bag Zoo in West Orange as part of a multi-park grant application to be submitted to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection's Green Acres Grant Program. Subsequent to the issuance of the public notice, the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection extended the grant application deadline from July 1st until July 15th. I understand that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection has not yet received the grant applications for these projects from Essex County and its nonprofit partners, and therefore cannot share them with the public who may wish to review them. Having not reviewed the application packet, I am unable to offer public comment at this time. I understand that I and others will have the opportunity to give public comment in writing after the applications are received. I understand that I and others may contact Cecil Murphy, the program specialist at the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, who oversees the Green Acres Grant Program for Essex County, to have all the submitted application packets emailed to us once they are received. She can be reached at Cecil, C.E.C.I.L.E. dot Murphy, M.U.R.P.H.Y. at D.E.P. dot N.J. dot gov. Again, that email address is C.E.C.I.L.E. dot M.U.R.P.H.Y. at D.E.P. dot N.J. dot gov. It is my hope that the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection would urge Essex County as the applicant to convene an additional public hearing on these projects after they receive the application packet. Thank you.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Khalil Kettles. Mr. Kettles, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Yes, how you do, good evening, Commissioners. Khalil Kettles, South Ward resident. Definitely familiar with Weekwake Park. Definitely hope that you support this project. But in addition to what's being asked and what's being offered to the park, I was wondering if more things can be added. We understand we need a new picnic area. That's definitely needed. And as far as breaking out Dividend Hill, can, is there going to be community meetings regarding the, the future projects of it before it's a go-through? That's pretty much it. I know that's within the three minutes, but that's just a few questions and concerns that we're asking. Like, is it going to be community meetings, discussing a project, and can be more implemented with the grant funding process of it? But we definitely support this idea and initiatives.
Mr. President, just before we go on, I see four commissioners' faces. I see Commissioner Luciano's green light is on. Can he just confirm that he's there, please? Commissioner Luciano.
Confirm, I am here, I'm listening.
I always count on you, Commissioner, thank you.
Okay, thank you, Madam Clerk. We do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
Mr. President, I, I do have some emails that we received regarding this grant application. And the first comment was submitted by Nancy Adams of Maplewood, New Jersey. Dear Commissioners, I'm writing in opposition to plans to further expand Turtle Bag Zoo with the New Asia exhibit. As with the amphitheater project, there is little to no public inclusion. The plans are not available, and yet we, you are applying for $5.1 million in public funds for this project and something at Weekwake Park. Having golfed there last season, I was astonished at the lack of trees, the tearing down of trees to presumably make this a links course, because yes, we should keep up with the current fad in golf and remove hundreds of mature trees from the city of Newark in order to do so. I will be on a plane at the time of your meeting and to finally visit my son for the first time since 2019. I urge you to please do your due diligence and not further expand into what's left of our natural resources. With everything that has just come out recently about the urgency, the life order, death nature of climate change, now is the time to invest in our natural resources, not make more attractions. As an elected official, I beg you to listen to your constituents and the scientists and leave what little natural space there is left in New Jersey alone. Please, thank you for your service. Then, okay. The, the next one is from Jack and Frida Zacken of West Orange, New Jersey. This comment concerns the county request for $5.1 million in the matching funds to construct a New Asia exhibit at the Turtle Bags Zoo for improvements at Weekwake Park, the nature of which are not disclosed listed on tonight's agenda. Plans for the Asia exhibit has not been posted on the county website or otherwise made available to the public. Therefore, any county residents had no opportunity to review the plans and their potential environmental impact. Until and unless the detailed plan for the Asia exhibit is made public and a meaningful opportunity for public comment is provided, it is highly inappropriate for the county commissioners to request funding for the project or to proceed with the project in any way. Why are the residents of Essex County being kept in the dark about the county plan for exhibit? We demand that the commissioners take no action of any kind with respect to the Asia exhibit until the commissioners fulfill their obligation to the cities of Essex County to apprise them of their plans and afford us the opportunity to comment. The commissioners are charged with acting in the public interest. How can the public interest be determined if the commissioners insist on proceeding without providing the public with relevant information and take the time to solicit public comment? Similar, so that concludes that statement. Similar comments regarding the Asia exhibit at Turtle Bag Zoo, improvements at Weekwake Park, sentiments against the expansion of Turtle Bag Zoo, and the request that the board refrain from taking action on these matters at this time were submitted by the following people and will be read into the record in their entirety at a later time. They are Joyce Rudin of West Orange, Jill Lauren of South Orange, Betsy Valdez of West Orange, Kathy Abrams of South Orange, Mark Fishkin of West Orange, Jacqueline Mayers of West Orange, Tricia Krantz, no address given, Isabel Garcia, no address given, Judith ROTHENTHALL of Milburn, Dolce Ureno of Maplewood, Risa Goldstein of South Orange, Rebecca Sawyer of South Orange, Nuno Garino of West Orange, Carolyn Kane of Verona, Jane Pfizer of Milburn, Richard Tisdale of West Orange, Suzanne Trimmel of Montclair, Carol J. Glegel O of Bloomingdale, New Jersey, Caitlin Bruno, no address given, Jonathan Glazier of South Orange, Darren N., no address given, Carol Selman of West Orange, and Carol Kuntz of Livingston. And that includes the...
Excuse me, Madam Clerk. We, we do, pardon me, we do Chalo Malumba Public Information Officer. We got an additional caller while the emails were being read. Through you, Mr. President, is it okay to put them through?
Yes, please do.
Okay, thank you. The caller is Joyce Rudin. Ms. Rudin, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Hi, good evening, Commissioners, and thank you for taking my call. I am frankly really surprised at the presentation this evening.
Text me, ask him if he wants to ask.
Can you hear me?
Deborah, can you mute the phone, please? Yes, we can hear you. Please continue.
Okay. So I am, I'm really surprised at the presentation that was given by the new zoo director. This presentation has been done without giving us graphics, without presenting a budget, without presenting a map, without presenting details of exactly why this is such an expensive endeavor. The county is requesting $2.55 million in Green Acres money as well as contributing $2.55. I understand that some of this will be going towards, towards the Weekwake Park, and we have no, no agenda there. But I am very concerned that, at this enormous expenditure, and really do need more facts. And I would hope that your commissioners would request more facts before you, before you vote to go forward with a requisition, request from the state. The Open Space and Trust Recreation Fund was intended to purchase and preserve open space, not just for recreation. I am part of the Coalition to Save South Mountain Reservation, and we spoke out very loud and clear in opposition last year to the 500-feet amphitheater that was proposed for outside the zoo boundaries. Frankly, in terms of this project, I'm not satisfied by any information that was provided tonight that this does not touch on the outside boundaries and of the zoo and into South Mountain Reservation. As one of the earlier callers mentioned, there is a history here with the zoo annexing areas outside of its borders and then claiming it as its own. Last year, we strongly opposed the development of the amphitheater.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Rudin.
Okay, and there was a rally. I am wondering, has the county forgotten that the public has spoken out loud and clear? The zoo is large enough. Residents want to keep our green spaces and use funds to improve and expand them. I request that you do not take any vote tonight as the presentation tonight was far from complete. Thank you very much.
Thank you. We do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
That concludes the public comment on this hearing.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Mr. Ronald Vecchio, you have the...
Just a question. I don't know if the administration wanted to respond to any of those or provide something in writing. Not at all, just want to get out there. There are a number of comments.
I would just, thank you, Mr. Ronald Vecchio. Through you, Mr. President. I would just, perhaps Mr. Zaitz or Ms. Fazio could just comment on the boundary issue, and then we'll just, any other things we'll just deal with in, in writing.
Sure, Joshua Gates, Essex County Parks. As the zoo director stated, the exhibit is replacing an older exhibit that was staying within the boundaries. This board recalls, within the past year or two, we've recently redid an eagle exhibit as well as the otter exhibit, both of which replaced previous exhibits and both of which stayed within the boundaries. We've been pretty adamant about staying within the zoo boundaries, and we certainly will continue with this project. And also, Josh, if I may just go a little further, I think the board needs to understand that this, this public hearing is a requirement of Green Acres in order to submit the application. We are still in the process of designing the Asian exhibit. We hope to have it completed by the end of the month and then have to bid at the end of the month. At this time, we simply don't have plans or specs to, to meet the requirement, I shouldn't say, to meet when we were conducting this public hearing. The grant application deadline is July 15th. This is the very last commissioner meeting that we could have this public hearing. We waited as long as we could to have as much information as we possibly can. But again, the plans and the specs just simply aren't available at this time. And, and again, this is just to apply for these funds. Certainly, if we are fortunate enough to be awarded these funds, we will certainly come back to the board to insert them, and we would be able to provide additional information at that time as well as if we, if, when we go out to bid and we get a bidder, we would certainly come back to the board to discuss, you know, how much the project will cost, what it'll entail. Again, this is very, very preliminary at this point. This is just a requirement that we need in order to apply for these funds. Thank you.
Ms. Sebo, you have a question or comment?
Yeah, I have some comments which I'd like to add. First of all, on June 28th, the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board met. I am a member of that board as a freeholder representative, and I was in the original work when we developed this board after the public wanted money to be put aside for open space. And at this meeting, we discussed Dividend Hill Monument at Weekwake Park. That Dividend Hill Monument has been there forever. I can remember when I was very young and lived very, very close to Weekwake Park. I lived in Hillside, and I was right near Weekwake Park. And I used to go to the area, and I remember Dividend Hill Monument well. And we are applying for money, for Green Acres money. I have no idea what's going to be done with that money yet because that hasn't been developed. But I am definitely in favor of doing something to bring it up to date because it's in very poor condition. In terms of the zoo, the Asian exhibit is with, right within the boundary of the zoo. It does not go outside the boundary at all. And because of the situation, the zoo was first developed in the early 1960s. Many of the exhibits through the years have had to be brought up to date because they're antiquated and they need improvement. And the Asian exhibit will be right within the footprint of the zoo. It's not extending into South Mountain Reservation. It's right within the zoo. But the people who have commented on it that they haven't seen anything, they haven't seen anything because nothing has been developed yet. All we're doing is asking for money from Green Acres so plans can be developed, and then we can see what will be done within the zoo and also within Weekwake Park. So we're continuing to work on it. And someone mentioned about the Sierra Club. I've been a member of the Sierra Club. I can't even count how many years. And I'm the representative on the Open Space Trust on Advisory Board, and I'm also the representative to the Essex County Environmental Commission. I'm really concerned about the environment, and I'm concerned about the issues, and I understand all the constituents' concerns. But until these projects are developed, we can't show anything for it. All we're doing is submitting a plan for Green Acres funding. That's it. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Sebo, for that explanation. Any other commissioners? All right. Madam Clerk, let's move to resolution number 24.
I'm sorry, Mr. President, I have a question. I apologize.
Oh, Commissioner Gil, sorry.
Thank you. Just two questions. I think the first one was answered, but I just want to make sure that I understand that the, the, the project as currently thought of would not encroach upon the reservation, would not go beyond the existing footprint that it's replacing. So we can, is that, was that what, is that was the testimony that, that was given?
Yes. Josh, can I answer? This is Gillian Fazio, the director of the zoo. I, I do want to confirm that we are replacing existing exhibits within the footprint of the zoo. They are currently unusable habitats that we're renovating for the species that we house currently at the zoo.
Okay, so this would not... Okay, so this would not, this would not encroach upon the, the reservation in any way?
It does not go near the perimeter fence at all. No.
When, within this process, if, if we, we apply for this money, we receive the money, if for any reason we decide or the board does not approve, when we, when we do get the plans of this project, because I am somewhat understanding how it's hard for people to understand that we're applying for money for something that is not, that we haven't seen. So if we see it and we don't like it and it's turned down, what happens to that money?
Joshua Yates, Essex County Parks. Through you, Mr. President. Keep in mind, the, the multi-part grant is two-folded. It's, as you know, both Weekwake and the zoo. So if, if for some reason there are some issues with the, the zoo design, certainly our first choice would be to go back and amend those. And if for some reason we can't come to an agreement, I would think that the, the money that was set aside in the grant award for the zoo, we would then just roll over into the Dividend Hill project.
Okay. We have a, we have a request, you know, we have a request from, you know, our local county president of the Sierra Club to table this tonight due to the, due to the, some of the questions around the project itself. But that, what I'm hearing is that we can apply for, we could, we, if we were to do that, right, that would potentially put at jeopardy the county receiving some of this money altogether. I, I wouldn't want to, I guess what I'm, I guess I'm making a statement and a question at the same time, which is it's an organization that I have a lot of respect for, that has some serious concerns about potentially the, the pathway forward on the project. So that's one, that's one issue. But the second issue, or the, the issue right now that, here now that we're faced with is the issue of applying for some money from the state. So if we were not to move forward tonight, would we put at jeopardy receiving this money from the state?
Joshua Yates, Essex County Parks. Through you, Mr. President. Commissioner Gill, that is, that is correct. Again, this is just the first step in, in many to, A, apply for the grant and then down the road, when Green Acres makes awards, you know, we would come back to the board to insert it and then eventually we would hopefully award the project. This public hearing is tied to Resolution Number 36 tonight, which is the enabling resolution to apply for the grant. So if, if for some reason the board did not vote in favor of that, then we would not be able to submit the application, which as you know includes both Weekwake and the zoo.
Okay. But assuming, if for this, for the next question, through you, Mr. President, if the, if the, there will be multiple opportunities, both for public discussion and input on what the eventual project may or may not look like. This is, this is not by far the final step in this process.
All right. Joshua Yates, Essex County Parks. Through you, Mr. President. That is correct, Commissioner Gill. As a courtesy, we do go to the West Orange Planning Board to discuss any zoo projects and certainly this one will be no exception. We do plan on bringing it to the planning board when that time is appropriate.
Finally, Mr. President, the, in addition, so in addition to a potential courtesy that, you know, that will, that will happen with the West Orange Planning Board, the Open Space Committee meeting where this discussed, though, I'm assuming that those meetings, this might be for the administration or for, or for Commissioner Sebo, those, those meetings are noticed in the same way that a commit, that a freeholder, excuse me, commissioner meeting is noticed? Like, would somebody be able to go to our website and know that there, that, and see the agenda for an open space meeting and know when, and look at the agenda, people that care about this issue and see this on the agenda?
Josh, through you, Mr. President. The, the statutes that created the opens, the Essex County Recreation Open Space Trust Fund are, are different than obviously for the commissioner board. It is an advisory board, meaning that they can only make recommendations. They have no, no powers beyond that. All they can do is make recommendations, which then obviously go to the commissioner board. However, having said that, we have committed to giving the public at least a week's notice when we do have an open space board. They are as needed. There is no set schedule. But we do put a notice on the county's website informing members that we're conducting a open space meeting on whatever date, at whatever time. For the past year, much as the commissioner meetings, the meeting, the open space meetings have been virtual, we do allow, we do give a email address where people from the public can email their questions and then we discuss them at the advisory board and then we respond to them in writing if need be.
Good.
And if I could just add to that, Mr. President. Occasionally, we have people who do submit questions for us to answer at the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board and we go through everything that comes to our concern. All we do is review what the administration is planning, what the county executive is planning. We question it. We may suggest changes and after it is finally approved, it then comes to the Board of Commissioners for approval. Nothing is approved without the consent of this board. But first, it comes to the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board and nothing is done without the final consent of this board. And whenever something is proposed, that proposal is explained to you. It's explained by Joshua Yates or it's explained by Kate Hartwick or it's explained by Dan Salvanti. But the entire project is always explained to this board and we do listen to everybody who has something to say about it. In terms of the Sierra Club, you mentioned the Sierra Club. I'm very committed to the Sierra Club. I've belonged as long as I can remember and the Open Space Trust Fund Advisory Board isn't looking to do anything to harm any of the communities whatsoever.
Mr. President?
Yeah, Commissioner Gill.
I, I appreciate that, Commissioner Sebo. I'm a member of the Sierra Club too, so it's not really relevant to me whether we're members or not. What I, what I just was putting on the record is that the leadership of the Sierra Club is, has asked us to table this. And so, so what I was putting on the record was that I wanted that to be acknowledged, that that was taken seriously. It's an organization whose opinion carries a lot of weight. I'm sure, as you know, you have the same passion for those issues that many of us do. So, so I wanted to make, I wanted to, I wanted to understand the distinction between their concerns for the actual project and what we're actually being asked here to do tonight. And I think those questions were answered for me, so thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Gill and Commissioner Sebo for both of your input and your concerns and acknowledgements.
Commissioner President, this is Commissioner Luciano. I just have a few comments for the record.
Go ahead, Commissioner Luciano.
Thank you, Mr. President. I just want to put on the record, you know, I've been the commissioner that represents West Orange for approximately 10 years and I understand the sentiment of some of the residents that have called with their frustration with traffic. I do believe that it's my understanding, and again, don't quote me, that this is not a project that will increase any traffic or movement at our zoo. It's just going to enhance what's already there. And we, I definitely understand what Commissioner Sebo and Commissioner Gill and some of the other commissioners have put on the record about being asked to table this. The best thing that I can tell everyone on here is this is very similar to a resolution that we passed originally regarding an amphitheater. And after further discussion and, you know, meeting with the public and determining that the project was to be scrapped at the time, we didn't go forward. But we did initially pass a resolution similar to this. So any member of the public that's watching this meeting or on the call or reads the minutes, I just want them all to know that passing this resolution is very similar to what we did with the amphitheater and the amphitheater did not go through. So it's not like this is the end-all by passing this resolution. This just would help us secure the money if we go forward and we like what we see going forward. So I wanted to put that on the record. Along with, you know, being a commissioner that now lives in West Orange off of Pleasant Valley Way, I am paying very close attention and I'm very conscientious to my neighbors. So I wanted to also put that out there. Thank you, Mr. President.
Thank you, Commissioner Luciano. Madam Clerk, there are no more callers and no more comments from commissioners. Let's move on to Resolution Number 24, which we'll read into the record at a later time. And... So we go from Resolution 24 through 27. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Director Burnett will handle Item 24.
Good evening, Commissioner President and Board of Commissioners. I'm Keisha P. Burnett, the Director of Small Business Development and Affirmative Action, as well as the Moorkeeper for Essex County. Tonight's contract is in response to RFP, the two lowest...
Mr. President, can we hang on for a second, please? I don't, I'm sorry. I'm terribly sorry. I don't think we closed that public hearing, did we? Just to tidy it up.
Through, through you, Mr., there is no voting or anything. It was just...
It's a public hearing that needs to be closed. I missed it, I'm sorry.
All right.
Just so it's done tight, that's all.
All right. Not, not a problem. I need a motion to close public hearings. Yes.
I'll be happy to close, to make that motion to close public comment on this.
A motion from BP Pumaras and a second from Commissioner...
I'll second.
What do we do here?
You let her get it.
All right. So a motion to close BP Pumaras and a second from Commissioner Sebo. Do I have the same move? Oh, no, that's it.
That's it, yeah. There's nothing, nothing to vote on, just a roll call to close out.
To close public hearing.
Okay. Commissioner Sebo.
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaras.
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado.
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano.
Yes.
Commissioner Johnson.
Yes.
Commissioner Graham. Absent, Commissioner Gill.
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson.
Yes.
So moved.
You missed the president. Thank you. Okay, let's go back to Resolutions 24 through 27. Director Burnett, the floor is yours.
Good evening, Commissioner President and Board of Commissioners. Tonight, I'm speaking as the Essex County Moorkeeper. This contract is in response to RFP for the two lowest responsive bidders to provide funeral services for, funeral services for our unclaimed indigent population, direct individual in-ground burials. It's a 24-month agreement not to exceed the amount of $350,750. Any questions?
No questions. Mr. Jackson.
Mr. President, Mr. Smith is going to handle Item 25.
Good evening, Mr. President, Board of Commissioners and Madam Clerk. My name is Eric Smith. I'm the Senior Data Processing Programmer for the Division of Senior Services. Item Number 25 is request for approval for the amendment to the 2021 Area Plan Matrix. That approval to amend the division's funding matrix is to obligate the Consolidated Appropriations Act of 2021. That's for home-delivered meals and the amount of $456,683 and the Coronavirus Response and Relief Supplemental Appropriations Act or Adult Protective Services and the amount of $195,822, as well as funding from the New Jersey Transit and the amount of $60,000 for a transit-on-demand pilot program that focuses on partnerships with transportation network companies or shared ride, or shared ride taxi companies. That was all. If you have any questions.
Mr. Jackson.
Thank you. Mr. Viera for Item 26.
Good evening, Mr. President and Commissioners. Michael Aaron, the Director of...
You're, you're breaking up, Michael. I don't understand anything you're saying.
Okay. And Michael Aaron, Director of Special...
Now is work.
We, we can't understand you, Michael.
Mr. Jackson, can you handle this?
I, I will do that. Yes, I will. Thank you. Thank you, Michael. This is a contract award to Panorama Tours, the lowest responsive, responsive, responsible bidder for the rental charter buses for the county of Essex. It's a one-year agreement not to exceed $50,000 and it's primarily used for the Senior Wellness Day event and it's 45, 55-seat buses and $800 per bus. Assuming I have no questions, we'll move on to Item 27, which Mr. McCoy will handle that, that item. Mr. McCoy.
Good evening. This is Terrance McCoy with the Division of Community Action. I'm here before the board. Good evening, Board of Commissioners. We are here for five contracts for the assistance with the E-RAP Emergency Rental Assistance Program for people that were impacted by the COVID-19 financially, to help with rental assistance and utility assistance. This contract will go until December 31st and we do have all five contracted agencies that went through the Competitive Contract RFP that was selected online. If you're ready to ask questions or ready for them to present themselves.
Sure. Let's, let's get them on. They can tell us a little bit about what they're going to do with all this money.
The first agency will be Irvington Neighborhood Improvement Corporation. Deborah Simkins, Executive Director. The Simkins.
Good evening, Commissioner President, Richardson and the Essex County Commissioners. I am the Executive Director of Irvington Neighborhood Improvement Corporation and we are very grateful for the E-RAP Assistance Program grant that we received for $1,595,000. And this is a, a grant that will enable us to continue to provide assistance in rental and utilities to the families that were financially impacted by the COVID-19 pandemic and are at risk of homeless, homelessness or utility disruption. And if there are any further questions in regard to this, I'll be happy to answer. Thank you.
Okay. And we also have the...
One, one second. I do have a question.
Sorry.
So how many people do you, with the money, with the 1.5 million, how many people do you think you can impact or assist? Have a guess at it.
Between 100 to 200 families.
So, so is there a maximum number that you can contribute to each or minimum number? How, how does it work? How do you determine how much a person or family will be given or helped with?
Through you, Mr. President, this is Terrance McCoy. The statute is of, we can do 12 months of arrears and we can also provide up to six months of forward assistance. So each agency is prepared to provide that assistance.
Oh, excellent. Thank you very much. Thank you very much. Let's continue.
Okay, so the next agency we have on is New Jersey Shares, um, who's a partner agency with, uh, with Essex County, and Ms. Cheryl Stoll, the Chief Executive Officer of New Jersey Shares, will speak next.
Good evening, this is Cheryl Stoll, CEO of New Jersey Shares. Thank you to President Richardson and the Essex County Commissioners. New Jersey Shares is thrilled to be a partner in this program. We're looking forward to being able to assist the residents of Essex County with both rental assistance and utility assistance. Um, we've been around for a little over twenty years, uh, primarily doing utility assistance. We partner directly with the utility companies, uh, and provide grants directly to them on the client's behalf. Um, and we've also begun a, a rental assistance program, which we're excited for. So we're looking at a little over three million dollars to help with Essex County, uh, residents within this time of need. So thank you very much and happy to answer any questions.
I, I have one. What happens if you don't expend the money by December thirty-first of this year?
I would defer to Mr. McCoy. It would be fine to extend it based on any decision made.
Terrance McCoy, Division, Division of Community Action. We have the ability to extend the grant into the new year based on the Department of Treasury's approval.
Thanks, sir. Next.
Next agency to speak is Amina Bay, Executive Director of Newark Emergency Services for Families. Miss Bay? Um, okay, I think she lost. There you go. Miss Bay?
Terrance, why don't you move to the next one, and we see if she can come back?
Yeah, okay, the next agency will be Mr. Brett Michael. Brett D. Michael, Major of Salvation Army in Montclair.
Through you, Mr. President, maybe they need to be unmuted.
Uh, yeah, 'cause Ms. Bay just texted me and said, why can't they hear and hear? Uh, Ms., Ms. Bay, you might be on mute. Okay, and Mr. D. Michael, Mr. D. Michael is not answering either. Uh, we do have the YMCA, Ms. Mabel Elmore and Ms. Brenda Myrick.
Okay, let's hear from them, and, uh, I don't think it's critical to hear from the other two. They're all pretty much gonna be doing the same, performing the same, um, tasks.
Right. And so Ms. Mabel Elmore, Executive Director, and Brenda Myrick, Director of Social Services of the YMCA in Newark.
Through you, Mr. President, they may need to unmute themselves.
Ms. Bay is saying her phone is unmuted. She's hearing everybody, but she can't say anything.
None of them are listed on my screen. Usually they're listed, not by name, but by number, and nothing is listed on the screen.
I see them. They're, if I may, Mr. President, they're calling, and so that's probably, that's why you don't see, that's why you don't see them on the screen, the commissioner doesn't see them, they're calling in. I don't know whether on our end, they should be muted, uh, centrally, I'm not sure, but, and anyway, Mr. President, your, your position is accurate. I think everybody else would have the same, um, story to tell, so I think, you know, comfortable moving on if the board is.
Sure, I mean, uh, Mr. Paul Vecchio and Mr. McInerney have any questions?
I don't have any questions.
Okay, so, um, Commissioners, any questions or comments? From Resolutions Twenty Four through Twenty Seven. Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Gill and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take Resolutions Twenty Four through Twenty Seven as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano? Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Commissioners, and I apologize.
No worries, have a good evening.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to Resolutions Twenty Eight through Thirty-One, which are from the Department of Public Works, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Mr. Gomez Ortiz is going to address these items.
Good evening, Commissioners, uh, my name is Andres Gomez from the Department of Public Works. We have four resolutions tonight. Resolution Number Twenty Eight will be a resolution consenting the township of Livingston, Real Solution R Twenty-One One Sit-Sate, which is the South Livingston Avenue Bus Stop Relocation. Resolution Number Twenty Nine is contract, it's a contract and award to Electro Battery Systems Incorporated to furnish and deliver automotive batteries. This will be exercised in a two-year contract extension, and it will be for an amount not to exceed thirty thousand dollars. Resolution Number Thirty is a contract to award Siemens Industries Incorporated to provide maintenance, service and technical support of the Siemens Building Automation Systems at various county facilities. This will be exercised in a twenty-four-month contract extension option, not, an amount not to exceed, uh, one hundred and forty-eight thousand and eight hundred dollars. And Resolution Number Thirty-One is a contract change order with Unitep Incorporated for general MEP and HVAC services at various county facilities. This is, uh, adding an amount to the contract that will not exceed a hundred and one, uh, thousand three hundred dollars. That is all.
Thank you. Mr. Paul Vecchio? I don't have any questions. Mr. McInerney? Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Johnson and a second from Commissioner Luciano to take Resolutions Twenty Eight through Thirty-One as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mercado? Absent.
Yes.
Okay, that's a yes from Commissioner Mercado. Uh, Commissioner Vice President Pumaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Thirty Two through Thirty Six, which are from the Department of Parks, and we'll read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Thank you, Mr. President. Uh, Mr. Zane will handle these items.
Joshua Zane, Essex County Parks. Number Thirty Two is a contract award to McRoberts Sales, Inc. for to furnish and deliver frozen fish and vertebrae to the Turtleback Zoo. The contract will run from August first of this year through July thirty-first of next year. Amounts not to exceed a hundred seventy-five thousand dollars. Uh, the most prevalent fish eaters in the zoo include the sea lion, the penguins and the otters. Uh, so this will, uh, the bulk of this will go to those animals. Number Thirty Three and Number Thirty Four are related, and then Number Thirty Three is the funding mechanism for Number Thirty Four. Number Thirty Three is the authorization to use the Essex County Recreation Open Trace, Open Space Trust Fund, uh, for design services for Dividend Hill over at Wequay Park. Amount not to exceed three hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars. And then Number Four, Number Thirty Four is the actual contract with ETM Associates, and an amount not to exceed three hundred twenty-two thousand three hundred thirty-four dollars. Uh, as we touched upon in the previous public session, um, this is for Dividend Hill. It's gonna do a historical and structural analysis of the monument, restoration and rehabilitation, uh, removal of existing double stairways replaced with a single staircase, site work, uh, lighting for public safety, uh, efforts, fencing and gates, paving. And I do believe we have a representative from ETM on the line to answer any additional questions.
So, yes, hello, can, uh, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Hello? Okay, uh, yes, hi, uh, good evening, Mr. President, Commissioners. Uh, my name is Dave Silver, I'm a project manager with ETM Associates. And, uh, we're a landscape architecture firm based out of Highland Park in Middlesex County. And, um, our work specifically focuses on traditional landscape architecture, as well as historic landscapes and public space management. Uh, we're a small firm, uh, we have five employees, and we have no employees from Essex County. And, um, I suppose I could speak a little bit about the, uh, project and how we're going to deliver it. So our firm submitted this proposal to restore the Dividend Hill Monument at Wequay Park, and, um, our office will be responsible for leading the team. And, um, our, our team is just fairly extensive. We have professionals that include architects, engineers, structural engineers, environmental engineers, and cultural resource specialists. And, you know, I'd just like to take a minute to say that we're extremely excited about the project. Um, our firm, as well as our, um, our partner, architects at Milchnoering, um, are, are very focused on historic landscapes and historic architecture, and we just couldn't be more excited about the opportunity to work on this project. And, um, I'd just like to state that, that our firm, our firm has had some experience working with Essex. A long time ago, we did some county, um, park master planning work for you, but that, that exceeds, I suppose, ten years. And Milchnoering Architects, they actually were the prime architect on the restoration of the Essex County Courthouse. So, um, I'm just here to answer any questions that you may have, and let you know that we're, we're very eager to, to roll up our sleeves and get to work on this.
Mr. Paul Vecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney? Okay, let's go on to Thirty Five. We'll come back to the Commissioners at the end.
Joshua Zane, Essex County Parks. Number Thirty Five is a, uh, resolution supporting a State House Commission pre-application to the New Jersey Department of Environmental Protection, Green Acres Program for diversion of parkland over at the South Mountain Reservation adjacent to the Glen Avenue Bridge, uh, in the township of Melbourne. This is, uh, actually a, uh, I guess you could say, a courtesy we are, we are offering to Orange. Orange, uh, is the applicant, it is their, uh, water lines that need to be, um, maintained, I believe, or fixed. Um, and, uh, as the property owner, we have to, uh, pass a resolution to support the project. We do have, uh, representatives from Orange on the line to explain further.
Yes, let's hear from-
Um, hold on one second, the representative for Orange will be on the line in a quick moment.
Hi, Josh Zane, Essex County Parks. Uh, just to give the board a, a little more information, uh, wait, wait, Orange. Uh, the city of Orange is upgrading water lines, uh, adjacent to Glenfield Avenue Bridge in Melbourne. Orange must submit an application to the NJDEP Green Acres Program for diversion. Part of the application is support resolution for the property owner, which is Essex County. Uh, the city of Orange water lines need to be upgraded. As restitution for the diversion, Orange must supply the county with either point one-one acres or two hundred eight thousand dollars. If the county receives the two hundred eight thousand dollars, it's two years to use those funds towards an acquisition. If there's no acquisition within two years, the two hundred eight thousand dollars gets thrown, turned over to the Green Acres, and Green Acres would then use the funds as part of a statewide pool, uh, of funds for acquisition. So, uh, in, in conversations we have with Orange, uh, there would be no negative impact on, uh, Essex County residents as far as road restrictions or access. Um, if they have to block the roadway, it would just be, uh, one lane, then combine two ways into one. So there's really no restrictions, and we're, we're just looking for a support resolution for this. Uh, Number Thirty Six is a New Jersey Environmental Protection Green Acres Program, neighboring resolution. This is the resolution that, uh, accompanies the public hearing we had, uh, earlier today. Uh, and I believe that's it. If there's any questions, I'm happy to answer.
Mr. Paul Vecchio?
Uh, no, I think Josh went into some more detail on Number Thirty Five and the, uh, the diversion of parkland, so I-
Mr. McInerney? Can't hear you, Mr. McInerney. You still can't hear you? Still can't hear you? Sorry. Commissioners? Questions or comments? I know we talked about this, uh, Number Thirty Five, that led the leadership meeting and the diversion. They were moving the, uh, water lines, uh, from where they are now, and they're actually going around the bridge and it's gonna reconnect, so they're no longer intrusive or in the way. So I think that's, uh, what we talked about in leadership. Mr. McInerney, you wanna try again? No, you giving up? You throwing in the towel, huh? So, I, uh, let's, uh, okay, Madam Clerk, uh, I have a motion from Commissioner Sebo and a second from Mercado to take Resolutions Thirty Two through Thirty Six as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pumaris?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Cooper? Absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to Resolutions Thirty Seven and Thirty Eight, which, uh, from the Office of Purchasing, and we will read them into the record at a later time. Mr. Jackson?
Mr. President, Deputy Administrator Coltrier is gonna handle these two items.
Julius Coltrier, Deputy Administrator, uh, Thirty Seven is a contract award to five lowest and responsible bidders. DM item at unit cost, they are for business cards, forms, envelopes, et cetera, that, uh, countywide use, and all the departments have the ability, including, uh, the Commissioner's office. This is a two-year contract for two hundred thousand dollars. Uh, the last contract we only spent, it's one hundred and twenty-one thousand six hundred and forty-five dollars and fifteen cents was expended. Uh, Number Thirty Eight is the, it was a competitive contract that we went out for. We received one proposal, which is, uh, the current cafeteria vendor, and, uh, it will be a revenue in the amount of sixty-five thousand four hundred dollars annually. Um, upon approval of this, you will have, uh, several months to do some shakedown using various equipment and new equipment that has been installed in the new cafeteria. Upon opening, the old cafeteria will close down, but, uh, it won't be for a few months.
Thank you, Mr. Coltrier. Mr. Polavecchio?
I don't have any questions.
Mr. McInerney? Can you hear me now? Now? Okay. No, I don't have any questions. Thank you. Okay. Commissioners, questions or comments? Hearing that, I have a motion from Commissioner Luciano and a second from Commissioner Mercado to take thirty-seven and thirty-eight as one. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner Gill?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Mercado? Commissioner Vice President Pamares? Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Commissioners, let's take resolutions forty through seventy-one. Are any questions or comments or anything anyone would like to be included on? So I have a motion from Vice President Pamares and a second from Commissioner Sebo to take resolutions forty through seventy-one as one. However, I would like to speak to resolution seventy-one. If I may. This is the formation of an election committee. So my remarks are in support of the formation of an election committee. The Essex County Board of Commissioners believe that Essex County has consistently done a good job of managing the election process. However, due to reports of issues with the June primary 2021 election, the need for more consistent role for the board has arisen. Creation of an election committee will serve to ensure the following. The Essex County Board of Commissioners gives consistent attention to the process of our county elections, that the board is aware of potential problems and actual occurrences if any arise in the future. The board is positioned to make suggestions and recommendations to mitigate or correct problems or issues with election processes as needed. Thank you very much. So I have Madam Clerk roll call.
Commissioner Sebo?
Yes.
Commissioner Vice President Pamares?
Yes.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes.
Commissioner Luciano?
Yeah.
Commissioner Johnson?
Yes.
Commissioner Graham, absent. Commissioner Gill? Commissioner Cooper, absent. Commissioner President Richardson?
Yes.
So moved.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Let's move to board committees. Commissioners, do we have any reports from board committees?
Mr. President, I do.
Commissioner Mercado?
Yes, Mr. President. On June sixteenth, the subcommittee, the ICE subcommittee met. And I would first, I would thank you, I would thank Vice President Commissioner Carlos Pamares for their attendance at the meeting, as well as Mr. Polavecchio and Frank McInerney. As you know, this, we convened this meeting looking to have some specific areas of discussion. And I had targeted six areas for us to discuss. We wanted to talk about the ICE contract, wanted to talk about the medical care and vaccination at the facility, facility inspections, food and kitchen, social services, and legal representation, which was really an area that had a lot of public interest. We had a robust meeting and discussions on those said topics. The administration, Mr. Director Al Ortiz led the discussion in terms of what the facility contract status is. They entered into, actually, they served ICE notice on April of this year, giving them a one-hundred-and-twenty-day notification to depopulate. So they have confirmed, and have discussed at this board, that August twenty-third is the due date for depopulation of all ICE detainees. They have confirmed that that is the goal, and they are working towards that. ICE has begun that process. At that time, on June sixteenth, there were one-hundred-and-nine detainees. As of yesterday, there are sixty detainees. The plan for the transfer of detainees is an ICE-driven plan. The county and Director Ortiz have said that they really have not been involved in that discussion with them. They are making those determinations and letting the county and notifying the county when those transfers take place. We also discussed the medical and the vaccination, and Dr. Anisett was very detailed in terms of what the facility has done to provide the medical care, especially during the pandemic. And this pandemic, as everyone knows, was, had an impact. Everyone in the facility, a lot of facilities around the state, folks had concern. And throughout the pandemic, Essex County only had one COVID-related death. So they are to be commended in terms of how they have screened and care for those detainees. They, Dr. Anisett went in detail about their, the work that they're doing and their ability to do the tests, detainees, for the various COVID-type testing, the partnership that they have with the Department of Health in the county. The Essex County Health Department has been extremely helpful in this whole process. And they've provided staffing, they've provided supplies, they've provided vaccines to the facility, whereas they have over four hundred, at that time, were four hundred staff vaccinated. And they have had over six, seven hundred fully vaccinated inmates, including the detainees. All the staff there are vaccinated, all the vendors are vaccinated. And they've really established a partnership with hospitals as part of this whole response to COVID, which has really assisted them in providing rapid care for the detainees. The Social Service Department has been really instrumental in getting the detainees to get vaccinated. So again, kudos to the administration and to Dr. Anisett for the care. He did, you know, also inform us of the new program. They initiated the medication-assisted treatment. We know a lot of the detainees that come in have diseases of addiction, so they're better cap, they're capable of providing the necessary treatment for substance abuse. They also have eight certified staff members that can administer Suboxone, and that's really important in the area of addiction and treatment. So including also in that was the facility inspection, inspections. Director Ortiz laid out all the inspections that the facility has undergone, including the state inspection, Nakamoto Group Inspection, which is the ICE inspection group, the Office of Detention Oversight, the PRIA, the National Commission on Correctional Healthcare Inspection, which they resulted in exceeding the standards. Then the ACA, the American Correctional Association. So the facility has been really engaged and prepared to really be equipped to provide the necessary service and care to the detainees. And there's numerous oversight agencies that are holding them accountable. And they're, they've demonstrated that they have completed these inspections in a satisfactory or exceeding standards manner. They also talked about the food in the kitchen. I can go on a list of all the upgrades to the kitchen that they've made. It enhanced the kitchens and enhanced the food service staff to be able to provide quite better, high-quality meals than they ever have been able to. They've initiated, all the meat there is certified, halam meat. They have, the detainees are also given certifications in Surf Safe certification, a total of four-hundred-fifty detainees throughout the course of the year. In two twenty twenty, received that certification. So a lot of good things have come out of that discussion. And then the last two points with the Social Service Department and their ability, they've been even working through the pandemic to provide a education to the detainees on the importance of vaccination. They've been instrumental in talking to families and detainees and getting them to get vaccinated. They have staff there, the three ombudsmen, three case managers, and their focus has been discharge planning, especially during this transition period. And time is of essence for them to really work hard with the families as best they can because notice is not given by ICE in many occasions. So one of the areas that my colleagues had questions, including yourself, Mr. President, was the allegations of sexual improprieties by inmates and who investigates. And they were, they discussed that in detail, that those investigations start initially in their internal affairs at the facility, and they forward it and work in collaboration with the Essex County Prosecutor's Office. And if there's necessary, the Essex County Prosecutors will continue that investigation and take it to wherever the facts may lead them. My Vice President Carlos Pamares had some important issues because we saw throughout this pandemic, and including in January, detainees on hunger strikes. And the hunger strikes, at one point, there were, I believe, eighty hunger strikers at the beginning of the year, and which resulted in later to only three, and then eventually none. So a lot of the care and attention by the medical department for those detainees that were protesting and the hunger strikers, by their admission to the staff and to many of the advocates, was that they weren't protesting the facility, were protesting mainly ICE and their detention. So kudos to the Social Service Department, who worked very diligently with the medical staff to get those detainees to transition back to eating and getting healthy. And then lastly, the area that we really wanted to touch on was the legal representation, which was a concern for many of the colleagues in, at Senior Hall and Rutgers and Legal Services. And again, kudos to those three organizations that worked diligently in providing the legal services. Again, that was the Senior Hall, Rutgers Legal, and the Legal Services of New Jersey. And there was a common theme in all of the concerns by these three vendors that have been providing the services, and it was that they really didn't know what, how their legal representation was going to take place once they left, right? Because it was unknown. So the requests, you know, some had requested notification by ICE so that they can properly prepare their legal case with their clients once they leave the facility. Some stay within this New Jersey, some go out of state, and some, you know, leave the United States altogether. But a lot of the process was unknown to a lot of these facilities, but they have been committed to working to represent them. And in fact, this board, the administration, and I want to commend the administration once again publicly for extending the contract to September. And in fact, not only did they extend the contract, they added seventy-five thousand dollars to that, to that contract. And then went further and allowed for the vendors now to spend down to zero so they can represent their clients that they're representing now. And each vendor had a certain amount of detainees they're representing. Senior Hall had eighteen at the time, Legal, Rutgers had seventeen, and Legal Services had twenty clients. They can provide services to those clients so long as they can spend down that money. So that was a very positive piece to this legal representation that we're able to provide. I don't think any county in the state of New Jersey and probably in the country are providing the type of assistance legally with the detainees as we are here in Essex County. So it was very robust meeting. I want to thank everyone that participated. I want to thank my colleagues for their support, and I want to thank the public who participated as well. And that concludes my report, Mr. President. Thank you.
Thank you so much, Commissioner Mercado, with that comprehensive report. Very much appreciated. Mr. Polavecchio, I have a question.
Yes, sir.
My question is, with the support of my colleagues, what I would like to do is send a support resolution or a letter to Senator Booker and Senator Menendez and to ICE in support of releasing those who can be released back to their families and the communities as opposed to a transfer. Can we put that together?
Well, you could do, we could do a letter if everybody approves now, but we don't have a resolution that we could.
Okay, so let's.
Together until, if you want to do it as a letter, that's, I think, and everybody wants to sign out to it, that's fine.
Do it while. Commissioners, any questions?
Grab something inserted.
Mr. President, if I may?
Yes, Commissioner VP.
I know that summer schedule is a little bit differently, so I would be in favor at the moment if we can do a letter. At least we will make our intentions known at this time, and then, you know, we can follow up with the resolution if and when the time becomes appropriate. But at least by sending a letter now, we can make our intentions and our sentiments known.
Excellent suggestion.
I agree with Commissioner Vice President Carlos Pamares.
Mr. Polavecchio, let's put it together and let's get that out ASAP.
Yep, I will get it together.
Thanks, sir. Do we have any legislative reports? Any written communication? About any unfinished business? Do we have any new business? Hearing that, okay, Madam Clerk, let's move to public comment session on non-agenda items. However, since we are meeting remotely, the public had an opportunity to submit questions and comments.
If you're calling in, the number is eight-five-five-seven-five-six-seven-five-two-zero. That's eight-five-five-seven-five-six-seven-five-two-zero. And use the password seven-four-one-nine-two-pound. That's seven-four-one-nine-two-pound. After entering the password, listen for the prompt to press zero to be placed in the queue to speak during the meeting. You'll be acknowledged to speak in the order that the call was received. Emails received. Emails received for public comment will be read after the calls are completed. So at this time, our Public Information Officer will announce callers so they can state their comment or question and be reminded, you have three minutes to speak. Please do not have your laptop or any electronic device on while calling in. At this time, we're accepting only calls pertaining to non-agenda items. Kalo Malumba, Public Information Officer, please begin this public comment session now.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. Our first caller is Suzanne Atman. Ms. Atman, you have three minutes to speak. Please state your name for the record. You may begin.
Hi, my name is Suzanne Atman. Good evening. Over the past few years, a group of residents with backgrounds in environmental engineering, business, and media have started to analytically and philosophically question the county consultant's recommendations to reduce the deer population through culling each year. We share your deep love for the reservations, but we're also deeply concerned by what we are learning and the $100,000 of taxpayer money spent annually for over a decade on a program that has not and will never work in achieving the stated primary objectives of forest regeneration. We reached out to Dr. Oz Schmidt, who's a professor and associate dean at Yale University School of Environment, for an expert opinion from an objective, sorry, objective scientist who is a national expert in forests and deer. He reviewed the county forest health studies and deer management reports provided by the consultants each year and concluded that they are not scientifically justifiable. Some of the findings from his written evaluation include that these studies no longer rely on a benchmark and follow-up measurements over the decade has been incomplete, the metrics used to determine annual deer reduction goals are flawed and based on a misrepresentation of the scientific literature, methods used to count deer are inaccurate and known for overestimating the number of deer. This includes both spotlight and drone surveys. More significant causes of forest impairment such as invasive jumping worms, climate change, and canopy changes have been completely ignored. In fact, Dr. Schmidt found worms in the soil while visiting South Mountain Reservation, these invasive worms. The reports sent to the county each year are recycled with old and unjustifiable data, yet they are used to pursue deer culling permits just the same. Killing deer never reduces the fertility rate. Instead, it triggers an increase in reproduction, given greater food availability and reduced competition. Or if breeding levels are already high, keeps them high. I realize that this is in some ways partisan and that some people feel they're dug in, but when a major scientist like Dr. Schmidt raises serious content and procedural questions, the county may feel it is time for a review and a rethinking and not enter another perpetual cycle of misdirected spending of taxpayer money. The old claim that culling is the only solution, that deer will destroy the forest, that there's no way to prevent car accidents or yard damage without killing deer is simply untrue. Can we meet with the county executive?
Thirty seconds, Ms. Atman.
And Dr. Schmidt can share his eye-opening findings and fresh ideas and forward-thinking approaches? That's my requesting question. Thank you.
Thank you. As is our policy, you will be responded to and answered in writing.
Thank you. Our next caller is Catherine Outlaw. Ms. Outlaw, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Hi, I'm Catherine Outlaw. I am also part of the group of residents who believe there is a more humane, sound, and cost-effective way to address deer management. One of my colleagues already explained that deer, the deer management program simply can't be justified and needs a rethinking. I want to add that after looking at car collision data in the county, it is clear that only 1% may be attributed to deer. But even more important, these collisions happen on roads that are not near the county reservations. So culling deer in the reservations as a way to minimize collisions is not an effective or honest approach. In addition, it seems that collisions tend to happen on the same few roads or hotspots. So strategically addressing those hotspots might be the best approach. We spoke with university research scientists who found a tool that significantly reduces deer car collisions and that this has not yet been looked at or tried in the county, in Essex County. In addition, Dr. Schmidt's findings present an opportunity to reassess the approach to forest regeneration and look at a new vision for these forested reservations. What new questions can we be asking that would lead to creative solutions? Because past questions only led to a dead end. For example, are these reservations just changing and evolving naturally? Are we making false assumptions that our forests are even impaired? And if impaired, what are the true culprits? Are we assessing the full range of factors, especially the issue of invasive worms? Or are we just blaming the deer as easy targets? There are various ways to increase biodiversity and forest management that have not been explored here. Can we reallocate the millions of dollars that would have to be spent as part of a perpetual cycle in killing in a more innovative, innovative, humane, and effective way? I also want to state that the state of New Jersey has no authority regarding the county's reservations. I understand from a friend that several years ago, you wanted to stop the deer culling, but the state threatened to replace it with public hunting. A lawyer explained that pursuant to the case of Safari Club International versus NJDEP, the state cannot hold any hunt on county-owned land without prior county approval.
Thirty seconds, Ms. Outlaw.
We are asking to meet with the county executive and present our findings and starting discussion to rethink a new, fresh approach with a scholarly, perspective-based objective to, to move forward on this topic.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Douglas Freeman. Mr. Freeman, please state your name for the record. You have three minutes to speak. You may begin.
Douglas Freeman, representing Weekway Park Conservancy, which is a true partner with the county of Weekway Park. It's Weekway Park Sports Authority and then Weekway Park Association. I want to thank the president and commissioners for accepting our proposal and to speak about the Dividend Hill. This has been a blighted structure, which is a historical structure, in Weekway Park. And it is definitely in need of restoration. The community and the surrounding community of Weekway Park and South Ward of Newark and Newark and Essex County is for this particular project. Also, I want to thank all those who have helped out and to bring this to fruition. One of the things that I did see and heard here, heard, that there was some statements about trees. For the record, I want the, the community to know and for those who are listening that the county and along with the Conservancy has put over 200 trees into Weekway Park. Not small saplings, but trees. We have been active in our community, over 100,000 hours of equity volunteerism. So if you want to speak on behalf of Weekway Park, at least be in Weekway Park, right? And not at the golf course. Okay, it's okay to go to the golf course and go to play, but if you do not enter Weekway Park and you're not actually restoring Weekway Park, your, your words do not matter here, right? For the community and also as an elective official also representing of, of the residents of the South Ward, which is over 30,000 residents. We want our park restored and we want it to be restored with quality, which we have been doing for the last 20 to 30 years. I do thank, once again, our president, Wayne Richardson, for listening to our concern. And we are ready to move on with this project and other projects that are on the table for Weekway Park. So that we can bring in not only the 200,000 people who have come into Weekway Park thus far, but to actually add more to come in future days and future years and for generations to enjoy this habitat, which we have, natural habitat. We even have deer in our park now and they enjoying their stuff too. So if you want to speak about Weekway Park, at least ask the deer how they feel too. Have a great day. Stay blessed, stay strong, stay healthy, and thank you for your time.
Thank you. That was our last caller. We do not have any other callers waiting to speak.
Thank you, Mr. Freeman. As is our process, we will answer you in writing. Very passionate community leader there. Thanks to everyone who spoke, took the time. Commissioners, anything you'd like to say?
Mr. President.
Commissioner Gill.
Thank you, Mr. President. Also just wanted to thank Commissioner, both you and Commissioner Mercado for that very detailed report, you know, from the meeting. As, as both you know, Mr. President, and Commissioner Mercado, it's an issue that I care deeply about and want to thank you and Commissioner and Vice President Palmeiras as well for the continued attention, wholly support. Didn't have an opportunity to say it, the idea of a letter. Look forward to seeing that circulated to our federal partners, which I think at this point in time, really the, the issue that we flagged, actually, some of the, you know, and there was disagreement on, on the board about potentially how we move forward as a result of one of the issues that's now being flagged by many of our constituents and advocates is if we were successful in, in bringing our ICE population to zero, where those ICE detainees would actually end up once they left the Essex County facility. So I look forward to potentially collaborating with you, Commissioner Mercado and Vice President Palmeiras and you, Mr. President, on some potential ideas on potentially how the county could even be more active on that front. Again, I think it should be noted that we've extended the funding of our, of our legal aid program. I want to thank the administration for that and should continue to explore ideas of, if that continues to be needed, to help in this situation. And, and last but not least, you know, continue to, I, I don't think this is a, it's really not a Democratic or Republican issue, it's just a right thing to do issue. So we, we need to really encourage the people now who have the ability to make this change. And it was mentioned we should do more, but we're passing resolutions, we're writing letters. This is not in any way to pat ourselves on the back, but it's to say that I think this board collectively has been vocal on this issue. And we're hopefully at the point where we don't have to adhere to, I think, a federal policy that just has shown itself to be ineffective and, and does not work. So we need our federal partners to step up and we're here to work and support them and help us, you know, with the next, the next step, I believe, of, you know, implementing a more humane immigration policy, not only here in Essex County and in the state of New Jersey, but across this country. So thanks so much, Mr. President.
Now, thank you, Commissioner Gill, and I agree with you wholeheartedly in your sentiment and your statements, for sure. Commissioners, any other comments or hearing none? I need a motion to adjourn. Don't all chime in at once. Commissioner Mercado, second by, Commissioner Johnson, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Have a good evening, everyone.
Good night, everybody.